Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. The City Council is sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We do not have any announcements out of closed session, as we do not have a closed session this evening. And at this time, we'll go ahead and move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Minister Tawana Ellison from the Burning Bush Church in Victorville, and Pledge of Allegiance by Police Chief Don Yoder. Mike, if I could ask you?
Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for... ...for each of our minds and hearts tonight, as we make this...
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a special introduction this evening. We do have our San Bernardino County Fire Chief, Mark Hartwig, here, and he would like to administer that, so if I could have Mark come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. If I could have Chief Holquist and Chief Corley come up, that would be terrific. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, first of all, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself, and also introduce your new Fire Chief, Division Chief, to the City of Victorville, which is George Corley. He's a Division Chief with the organization. Also, I wanted to take the opportunity to just give some thanks and gratitude to Chief Holquist, who has been your Fire Chief since the County Fire Department has been providing services here in the City of Victorville. Real quickly, if I could, just to give a real quick background on each one of them. And Chief Corley has been with the County Fire Department for about eight years, and he most recently served as Division Chief in our mountain region. And many of you might have been following about, following some of the challenges we've had with the bark beetle up in the mountains, and the efforts that were undertaken in order to mitigate some of the problems or hazards up there, and so that we didn't have a catastrophic fire and loss of life or property up in the mountains. And Chief Corley was active in really administering, designing and administering those programs on behalf of the County Fire Department. So he comes to you with a lot of experience, comes to us from the Forest Service originally, and has a national incident management team experience as well, and so we're happy to have him out here. We think that he's going to do a great job for you out here in the City of Victorville. And I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge Chief Sid Holquist and his service here in the City of Victorville. Victorville was looked at, and is looked at, as one of our finest operations in the County Fire Department, and that's due in large part to the leadership and direction of Chief Holquist. He has a great operation, and he runs training and incidents here in this area in a manner in which we would like the whole County Fire Department to be run. And so we have asked Chief Holquist to step in as a Division Chief at the training and safety in EMS Division, and he'll be downtown, actually close to my office in San Bernardino. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to, again, introduce Chief, Division Chief George Corley, as your new Fire Chief on behalf of the County Fire Department, and then, again, recognize Chief Sid Holquist for his service here, and give you a little bit of background about where they're going.
Well, welcome to the City of Victorville. We look forward to working with you, and although we're sorry to see Sid go, I know these things happen, and it's kind of, hopefully, a promotion for you in moving into that training position. But we appreciate everything that you've done over the last several years, serving the City of Victorville, and getting our fire stations to where they're at today. I think you've done a great job, and we'll expect the same, and I know you'll do a great job, so thank you all.
Very excited about my new excitement, but I have some big shoes to fill.
Well, good. Welcome. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Thank you. All right, this time, I'll ask the City Clerk to present the agenda to the Council, and any revisions?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the Council Chamber's lobby, and give it to the City Clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The Mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the City Council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the City Clerk for anyone who wishes to address the City Council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the Mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the Mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the Council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the Council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council. Tonight's agenda has just one revision, and that would be to item number nine, a public hearing. There is a request to, after the hearing is open, to continue that item to the first meeting in September, which would be September 6th. And those are all the revisions that I have, Mayor McEagren.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into public comment, and the first card I have is Dorothy Miller.
I don't want to forget anything tonight. I'd like to know what happened to our grand jury. We never got the results of that. And the frigid audit, we've never seen that. What is going on? Is the grand jury as bad as some other people I know? No one's getting any answers. Did we break ground for the Walmart on the 26th? I wasn't fortunate enough to be there, but I don't even know if they broke ground. The paper sure didn't put anything in it about breaking ground. So I was trying to figure that one out. And we have things going on. The Mayor should be running this council, not individuals. And I will speak on that when it comes up on the agenda. The Mayor needs to step up to the plate and run the show, and if he's not going to run the show, then he needs to step down along with somebody else that is trying to run the show. It's not going to work. I mean, it makes this city look like trash. Everybody up there, sit up there and write down their opinions, and send it to all the other people in the whole dang country, all the other cities, which really makes you look stupid. Thank you.
Joseph Andreessen?
I would just like to speak. I'm Joseph Andreessen, Superintendent at Oregrand School District, and I know we have been in contact with the city officials and are very interested in using the West Winds Gymnasium in the afternoons. One of the biggest problems is, at the same time, everybody else wants to use it, but our gymnasium has kind of been put on hold that we are building for Riverside Preparatory School. And so we are in negotiations, and just want the Council to know, I know there was some consideration of closing that gym, and at least for the next year, we would be very interested in three or four hours a day, every weekday, of some usage of that and being able to pay for that and work through that, and just want the Council to be aware of that, and to look at that as, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but as you look at that, the possibility of closing that facility. Thank you.
Carrie Latham?
My name's Carrie Latham. I'm a retired police officer, spent 20 years in public service to my city, unfortunately retired due to a bad on-duty car accident where I broke my pelvis and my back. I've had 18 surgeries, and I just want to talk to you guys a little bit about the Doris Davies Pool, Pebble Beach Pool, whatever you guys would like to call it, but I'm a resident of the High Desert, and I'm dismayed by the number of drownings that have occurred in 2010, and we would all be remiss if we didn't beg you to please keep that swimming pool open for the youth here in Victorville for the swimming lessons. I feel that we have a civic responsibility to provide a safe and secure location for our youth to learn to swim. There are no other options in Victorville for the kids to learn how to swim, other than the Doris Davies and Pebble Beach Pool. If you think about this, drowning is very quick, it's very quiet, it takes about seven seconds for a child to drown, 20 seconds they can asphyxiate under the water and die. That's really not a lot of time. It's very quick. Last year, there were about 3,800 unintentional drownings in the United States, and that does not include the four kids, for every one that dies, that was hospitalized and left severely brain damaged or with permanent neurological disabilities and/or physically impaired. Drowning in 18 states is a leading cause of death for children under four, and in California, it ranks second only to automobile accidents. And swimming and accidents related to swimming, you are 14 more times likely to die or have a serious injury than being involved in a car accident. This is a diverse community in the High Desert, and in Victorville, we have a very diverse population. I think it's probably about 20 percent African Americans. And just so you know, that African Americans are 1.3 times more likely, and 3.2 more times likely for kids over 14 years old to drown as a result of not knowing how to swim. So I think that, you know, we really owe it to these people in this community, and to people in the other communities that use that pool to do what we can to keep it open. If you think back to Doris Davies and all that she did for the City of Victorville while she was alive, she led a very colorful life that involved a lot of community service. She worked as a lifeguard, that was something that was near and dear to her heart. She was a swimming performer when she was in New York. She coached and mentored hundreds of youth in Victorville and in the High Desert area. Her legacy is very impressive as a, you know, career volunteer philanthropist, and she was a tireless advocate for the children of our community. So please find it in your hearts, your wallets, and your city budget, to keep these facilities that were near and dear to Doris Davies' heart and that are very important for our youth, open. There are several people that swim at that pool as adults on a regular basis that have volunteered to recertify as lifeguards and even volunteer, so the cost could be cut to maintain lifeguards by a volunteer force at that pool. I happen to be one of them, and a couple of friends of mine who also swim there will volunteer at least 20 hours a week to lifeguard if we can keep that pool open for our kids. Thank you so much.
Karen Crawford?
I also am talking about the Doris Davies Pool. I am a swimmer. Where did I learn? At a public pool. Why do I go? Keeps me fit. Ladies and gentlemen, you should try it. They have it in the morning, everyone's there, it's fun, it keeps you fit. 6 o'clock in the morning, I get up at 5 to come and swim five days a week. I do 2,300 meters a day. If you figure it out, it's over a mile. We need this pool open. Thank you.
Erin Bailey?
My name is Sharon Bailey. I'm disabled, and we have parties all the time on our street, on Merrill Street, that till 3, 3:30 in the morning. And I want to know what happened to the ordinance, not only for the people walking on the street, but the noise ordinance, because I'm representing the whole street of all the old people that are retired there. Nobody wants to speak, some of them have spoke to the police, and nothing's getting done. We have people on a corner house that drink all day, and I've been told that they pee in the road. Now that is disgusting. And I know other people around my house and the upper part of the street are disabled to some sort, and I just want to know what happened to the ordinance, because when I grew up here, I grew up here 25 years as a child, and then I was here for 55, ongoing. I had to leave the area for a year and a half. I came back here, and it's disgusting. It's just really, you know, I mean, if they had a curfew, they could go ahead and party and have a good time, I have nothing against that. But stop the loud music and the bumpin' music and the partying. And I think most of it is the party for the family, the members, because there was kids running around yelling and screaming. And I just talked to an officer earlier, I gave him my number, he's going to check on the reports, but nothing got done. Though I'm representing my street of the old retiree people that are ill. They need to sleep too, and I just want you to know, there is a problem down there. Now, I know it's in the lower park town, and there's always been a problem, but I lived with my parents there before they passed away. And we didn't have half as much music going on in late nights when they were live. So I would like to see an ordinance, not only for the people walking on the street, but for the noise ordinance. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Riak? Is that, forgive me for, that's Riak, okay. Okay.
Well, my name is Regina Riak, and good evening, Council, by the way. But I'm also here for the Davies, Davis-Doris Pool. Actually, where my children are swimming lessons right now, I have a 10-year-old daughter and a 4-year-old. The 10-year-old, she knows how to swim, she grew up at the Doris Davies Pool, and my 4-year-old, this is her first year of having lessons there. And, you know, the first day, she didn't even want to jump in the pool, she didn't even want to go in the pool at all. And now you should see her, she's like trying to swim and everything, which is awesome. And then also, my 10-year-old, she's been doing Level 5 for the last couple of years, but I kind of had hopes of, you know, her one day becoming a junior lifeguard, you know, having a summer job, you know, doing things like that, and, you know, kind of leading her into that direction, and she loves swimming and everything. And then, you know, if they close that pool, there is no other pool around here except in Apple Valley and Hesperia, and then, of course, those residents are going to get the very first, you know, the first sign-ups, they take the residents first before us, you know, and then, of course, those pools are like half an hour away from us, and, you know, so I'm just afraid that they're not going to get, you know, to take any more swimming lessons. And knowing that my daughter's first, my little 4-year-old, it's her first year taking swimming lessons, and pretty much on what the First Lady said, you know, she pretty much summed it up about the drowning and everything, so she had the statistics. Thank you. I just want to keep that pool open.
Irv Kettler?
Thank you for the opportunity. I was not this way when I started Water Aerobics back in 2000. I was one of the original members of Barber's class, and through Water Aerobics, I was able to keep my rheumatoid arthritis at a stagnant point. The water polo team supported the city through the winter, and it was open, I think, until 2005 or 2006, when they upped and went to the Apple Valley Pool. And then two years ago, we had the opportunity to get them back, and we snatched defeat from the jaws of victory by letting the Booster Club jump in. But I'm just confused as to why all this time, the city relied on the Booster Club to, what do you call it, subsidize the pool instead of planning accordingly. Our swimming classes are full, the racquetball court has constant attendance, the tennis courts are always occupied, the picnic grounds are always being used by, by my note, the same families over and over again, and we're like a grocery store that gives away free milk with a dozen eggs and free meat with a bag of potato chips. We're not charging for the tennis courts, we're not charging for the site use of the picnic tables, and our maintenance costs are predominantly from the maintenance of those areas. So I challenge you, before you decide to take a one activity that is overbooked with swim lessons, overbooked with people trying to participate, and cut back there, let's look at charging for all the groceries in the store. And I don't think that that's been addressed. I mean, to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't even ask people to get a permit to go out there and make a mess every Sunday, or, and the same people are out there every morning. So, you know, all this talk about closing the pool, you know, is very myopic. And, you know, I happen to, I happen to have been a resident of Victorville for 14 years, I have a business here, and I'm just appalled, and, you know, if you want, I can offer you some of my experience from pre or previous, I mean, I've only been on, you know, corporate staffs of big-name corporations, and I said, I know how to make things efficient, I know how to make them pay for themselves, and I just don't think it's been addressed. Now, thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, that's all the cards.
Before, yeah, if I understand it, we're not closing the pool this summer. The pool is not being closed this summer, am I incorrect in that statement?
End of this fiscal year.
That's correct, Councilman Rothschild. The pool is not being closed this season. I expressed at the last council meeting, that, I know you weren't here, sir, but that what we will be looking at is, can we keep it open for next season? That's a decision that has to be made before we begin to hire all of the lifeguards and the seasonal help. So that's something that'll be before the Council. As I mentioned two weeks ago, this is not something that anyone on staff or this Council wants to do. It all depends on where our revenues are, and, you know, what decisions the Council makes as far as your priorities, about, you know, what tough cuts need to be made in the event that the revenues continue to decline.
All right, we'll now move into our agenda items. Under the Library Board of Trustees, there's no items at time of posting, nor are there any items under the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority or Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Moving into the Redevelopment Agency, we have Agenda Item Number Three. This is a request to, one, affirm the authorization to execute the purchase agreement and escrow documents for NSP acquisition of real property, and, two, approve the additional appropriation from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program fiscal year 2008-2009 program income funds in the amount of $395,992 for the purchase and other associated costs to acquire the
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Again, I believe that this program is competing with private business and keeping our property values down.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items at time of posting. We'll move on to the Victorville Water District. Agenda Item Number Four is request to approve the annual purchase order request for Mojave Water Agency, MWA, for water deliveries for High Desert Power Project for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of $1 million.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Five is request to approve the annual purchase order request for Mojave Basin Area Water Master for quarterly water production reports and invoices for administrative and biological assessments for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Six is request to approve the annual purchase order request for ES Babcock &amp; Sons, Inc., for wellsite water quality sampling for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of $160,000.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Seven is request to approve the annual purchase order request for Clinical Laboratories of San Bernardino, Inc., for distribution systems, water quality sampling for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of $100,000.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to our City Council agenda, we have continued public hearings. Agenda Item Number Nine, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against providing for a police service fee for multiple police...
We didn't do eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go back to eight. Request to approve the annual purchase order request for wellsite chemical supplies and disinfection for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of $150,000.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries unanimously.
Now, moving on to the City Council Agenda, Item Number Nine, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against providing for police service fee for multiple police responses at the same premises, and rescinding ordinance number 1519 as set forth in ordinance number 2275. We have received a request to continue this, and maybe we could have some background as to why we're continuing this once again.
Mayor McEagren, the request is from our office. We saw the ordinance in connection with the posting of the agenda. We fully intend to review it. My concern right now is, as it's currently written, it probably would not withstand a constitutional challenge on due process grounds. It needs to be tightened up, so we want to make sure that we have an ordinance that is enforceable, and hope to get that back to you either the next meeting or the following meeting. So I recommend opening the public hearing, taking the testimony, we just want the ability to tighten up the ordinance, we did not draft it. We want to make sure that it's watertight and defensible.
All right, this is a continued public hearing, so we'll allow for testimony on this item. I do have one card, April Pinkston.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and you guys are probably tired of seeing my smiling face up here, but I just, you answered my question about why it was going to be continued, but Chief Yoder was kind enough to send me a copy of this ordinance, and I had one concern, is that it seemed like it was too much in general as far as just a large party, and I'm concerned also with, you know, Janie Sue up the street cleaning And I'm concerned also with, you know, Janie Sue up the street cleaning her house and blasting the stereo off the windows. So I'm not sure if that was going to address that as well, or if it's just going to be regarding loud parties.
Perhaps that's something that can be considered when it's reviewed by our city attorney as well. We can take that into consideration.
Okay. So now, it's going to be, because this says on here, well, this is Agenda Ten, so it says October, so the next meeting, you guys are going to address this and vote on it and get it done, or?
The way the agendas are prepared, it's about almost a two-week lead time now, so realistically, it'll be the second meeting, I think, the first meeting in September is when we're scheduling to have the hearing.
Okay. All right. That's all I have then.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So we're looking to continue this to the--
September 6th.
September 6th council meeting. And we'll keep the public hearing open on that item. Agenda Item Number Ten is a request for continuance of public hearing to October 4, 2011, regarding Code Amendment PLN 10-00027. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Ten. Anyone wishing to address us on that item. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and continue Agenda Item Number Ten to October 4, 2011. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, is a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against various amendments to the municipal code necessary to transfer business license operations to the Development Department as set forth in ordinance number 2276, titled "Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Approving Amendment DEV 11-00007: Various Amendments of the Victorville Municipal Code Necessary to Transfer Business License Operations to the Development Department, City of Victorville." Go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Eleven. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for a decision.
Motion to waive further reading and introduce ordinance by Mayor Protem Cabrealis and second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twelve is our consent calendar.
I'd like to point out that we're paying the city attorney $114,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number Thirteen is an urgency hearing to discuss and decide if council agree to the voluntary alternative redevelopment program established by ABX 127 as set forth in ordinance number 2277 entitled "An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Determining It Will Comply With the Voluntary Alternative Redevelopment Program pursuant to Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code in Order to Permit the Continued Existence and Operation of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency."
Mayor McEckern, while not noticed, does a public hearing would be appropriate to consider this item as a public hearing and to have a public hearing on it as well since it's an urgency ordinance?
All right. We'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right. Seeing no one, I'll return to the council for a decision.
I have a question for Mr. Metzger. Keith, when we make a payment, what, $2.8 million on this alternative program? What do you think are the prospects if the legislation is overturned and that whole effort fails? What are the prospects that we'll have that money refunded? Any idea?
If we actually cut the check and then are successful in the lawsuit?
Yes.
Your guess is as good as mine. I mean, at best, maybe get an IOU in return. It's really hard to predict, and because of that, we're really going to hold off in actually cutting a check as long as we possibly can. We're hopeful that the CRA, which is a California Redevelopment Association, is successful in its lawsuit challenging the constitutionality of this bill. We're also involved in drafting or participating in the drafting of carve-out legislation that may be helpful to our efforts as well. So despite these trailer bills being approved and being a part of the existing law, we're going to hold off as long as we can until actually making the check. But as it relates to this particular item, this is dealing with Victorville's RDA, separate and distinct from the VITA Redevelopment Authority.
Councilmember Kennedy, if I might add, the ordinance also in its body indicates that it's being adopted under protest and that we are reserving for ourselves all of our rights and ability to retrieve any monies if we do have to make the payment in January. So we'd have a strong legal claim to get our money back.
And there's one more follow-up to that. If the state has to repay these dollars, you can bet that they will come after other dollars that they've been successful at in the past. So it would not be the end of the story if they lose the lawsuit. They'll come after somebody, and it would likely be cities and counties and special districts. See it again.
Thank you.
Let me make a, no, not a question for Keith. I remind you again why this city and probably every redevelopment in the state of California is so intent on retaining their redevelopment agencies. First of all, it's self-evident, the state doesn't go after an RDA if it isn't a successful entity in the state and collectively and individually with us as well. It is a successful entity. It's a revenue generator. Let me give you a real simplistic statement again. It's never hurts to remind you how this works. A redevelopment agency is the property tax that is put on after we set up the redevelopment agency. Any new growth there, any new property tax that exists stays locally. All the old property tax that existed up until the moment we established that RDA, that continues to go to the state of California. If we didn't exist as an RDA, if we didn't exist at all, that brand-new building that showed up in our RDA and gives us that property tax, that same property tax is still going to be there. It doesn't go away, but it goes to Sacramento. So what does the local entities do with it? What does City of Victorville do, Los Angeles, and the 400 other RDAs in the state of California? They keep it locally, and they spend it on the infrastructure, the streets, the fire, the water, the sewers, all of the utilities that are involved. That is what they do locally with that property tax increment. Otherwise, that increment that is in the billions of dollars would already be sitting in Sacramento. How does that work for you now? I mean, they've done such a wonderful job. They're $25 billion in debt as we sit here right now tonight. That is why they're coming after this. You want to support us and every other RDA in the state of California to retain their RDAs, because that property tax does not go away for the businesses and homeowners, for that matter, within the region. It continues to be perpetuated, except that it goes to Sacramento instead of stays here. We are restricted in how we use it. We can't pay the police firing streets over here. We have some very collective regions that we can use it for, and that's it. But would you rather have five of us making that decision here, or Sacramento making a decision on the same amount of dollars that aren't going to go away? So as you understand that RDA, the indebtedness is okay, because it is a property tax increment that is paying all that indebtedness back. That is a given. We've gone through the most awesome devaluation of property real estate in the history of mankind in the state of California and in this country in the last three years. We bonded 70% of what we could have. That's why we're barely making it now, even though the property values have gone down 50%. We only went up to, in some cases, not even the 70% that we were allowed. So we had that cushion built in. And here we sit right now, Barry Holden. But the state of California knows very well, this is going to go away. Next year, a year after, it's better again. They want this money. It is good money. It is money that creates jobs and businesses. So this RDA here is the biggest one in the state of California. It is one of the most successful ones. We're $300 million in debt. That is a good indebtedness, because we have the property tax coming in to pay all that bondedness back, and the banks know it. That's why they give the best deals to the redevelopment agencies, because we didn't bond a maximum of what we, but we bonded up to about 70%. So that's my lesson one. Each time, each time we have a meeting, I wanted to have a little bullet point on the RDA. This seemed to be a good moment to explain that again to you, how the RDA works. That property tax is there. It doesn't go away. It's whether it stays here, and we continue to pass it through to our school districts, water districts, yes, the city, in terms of some of the infrastructure that we do out at the SCLA. But it stays here, and we pass through all of our money. We give the school districts and everybody. They're happy with our RDAs. Some RDAs, I can't speak for anybody else, but this one, we've always had since its inception. And they don't want it to go away. Ask any school district administrator, you want the local RDA to go away. They won't hesitate at all to tell you, I can assure you that, yes, fight to keep it. So that's what we're doing here now. We're fighting to keep money that is rightfully ours under every kind of statutes. There's about three levels of constitutional law the state has to get through to get to this money. I can't believe they're going to succeed, but you never know. You know, laws and courts are what they are. But we're fighting right now. The mayor's going to be in a meeting, what, Friday, with the other mayors, defending the redevelopment agency's inception here. Everybody in the Victor Valley, everybody in the Victor Valley, not just Victorville, benefits from this RDA. All the cities, unincorporated area, the school districts, Mojave Water Agency, you name it, everybody gets a piece of the action. And that billion-dollar power plant that's coming up, that's $10 million a year in tax increment staying locally versus that $10 million going to Sacramento. A billion dollars is $10 million. Think of it that way. And we got a billion-dollar plant teed up here, just about ready to go. So I just wanted to give you that little bit of a lesson. I've got, each time, I'm going to give a different point on what the RDA is. But the mayor and the other mayors are all fighting for it, and so are the mayors all over the state of California, who've got some very heavyweight people. It has nothing to do with being a Republican or Democrat. It has everything to do with being a business and delivering our local services.
Well, that's what the RDA is supposed to be doing. However, with Victorville, we use that money for the EV5 that was a failure, the VB2 plant that was a failure. Millions and millions of dollars have been lost, taxpayer dollars with that RDA money. And if we make these payments, we could default on bonds? Is that my understanding?
No, that's incorrect. The bonds are secured by the tax, property tax increment revenues, and that is the only pledge to any of the bonds. The bonds are not a pledge on the general fund of the City of Victorville or any other assets of the City of Victorville. It's purely secured by property tax increment.
This RDA money has been squandered by the City of Victorville. If we had any other city council, over this money, I would say, yes, it would be a good thing for the city. However, not Victorville. They have acted irresponsibly. This money is being used to compete against private business. It's irresponsible government to pass this tonight. Buck Johns has made millions of dollars off of this RDA money. Of course, they want to keep it here. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program, they give somebody the money for the down payment on a house instead of having to save it like the rest of us. They buy the house. The house that goes on foreclosure, the city gets first dibs on that house before any developer, before any real estate agent, anybody. The city decides whether they want to buy it or not. They fix it up, and they sell it low on the market, which keeps our property values down. They gave $20,000 to High Desert Opportunity to listen to Magic Johnson for the business people. I mean, is that really good use of our tax dollars? Is that really good for our city? What has it really done? They say it's brought jobs, but now we're suing the federal government. I don't agree. I think it would be a good program if any other person or any other entity was running it, but not Victorville.
Just for clarification, is that for the waiving of further reading and introduction or adoption, excuse me? Is that the motion? Is the motion to waive further reading and adopt the urgency ordinance?
Yes, that's the motion. I'm sorry.
Second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 14 is request to accept home funds in the amount of $13,241.09 to be used for the ARR program home activity.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Mayor McEckern, may I get a vote from you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 15 is request to award a contract to Stimax Construction for the rehabilitation project for the High Desert Homeless Services Dorm Renovation Project in the amount of $60,000 to be funded through CDBG grant funds.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 16 is request to adopt Resolution Number 11-039 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, superseding Resolution Number 10-029 for the purpose of revising the city manager's existing authority to execute contracts for the supply of electricity."
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have an issue with this item. In particular, the words that the city manager can execute contracts not to exceed $24 million over a five-year period or his designee. Now, I understand that purchasing electricity is very volatile. It's like on the stock market, you have to make quick decisions.
Correct.
And that's why you can't come to the council to get permission to execute these contracts because they have to be done quickly?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Who is executing them? I mean, do we have a consultant? Do we have somebody, a professional? I mean, it takes a lot of skill to do this.
We do have a consultant. In fact, the council approved an extension to his contract at the last meeting. That's the contract that I mentioned. I would like to bring that expertise in-house someday as we grow as a utility. At this point, we depend on his expertise in that field. And in my now one month on the job, I haven't been presented with any contracts, and I have not designated anyone to approve any contracts. The purpose of this item is to allow us to do that in the future, as may be necessary in order to secure long-term contracts. The current resolution expires essentially with contracts through the end of 2014. And on occasion, longer-term contracts end up benefiting the city greatly by locking in those prices. There's a definite balancing, as you mentioned, as we discussed on the phone earlier today. And it's interesting to note that both of our new council members called to ask about this item. And I've told both of them, this is for the public now, that it is a very complicated issue, one that most city councils don't deal with. So I'm going to ask our consultant to come up as early as possible, so long as we're going to have a full council here, to do a presentation on how this works. I could give you sort of a Cliff's Note version, a Reader's Digest version, a thumbnail version, whatever you want to call it. But it would be much better for you to get the full background on that process and how it works and how it works to our advantage.
My issue is, is if we go ahead and vote on this tonight, I'm not comfortable with the word "city manager" or "designee." I think the person needs to be identified so that I have the confidence that we have the most skilled or the best person executing or securing the best deal for the City of Victorville.
And I don't have an issue with this not being approved tonight. As far as I know, we don't have any contracts that are coming due. If so, I wasn't told about them. And so I think we could bring it back and maybe do it after a presentation. In general, I will let you know that I have no intention of simply designating someone to do this. The only time that I might do that is if I were going to be out of town at such time as I would designate somebody as the acting city manager. I would also include this as part of that designation. But this is too big an issue that I would not want to lose the control of this myself.
Now, how long have we had this arrangement in place?
Oh, gosh. Sean, do you know? Sean inherited utilities when Omar left back in February or March. Sean inherited utilities when Omar left back in February or March or so. And I'm trying to scan the agenda item. I suspect this has been in place for at least two to three years at this point.
And this is for the purchase of electricity at Foxborough, am I right?
At Foxborough and at SCLA both.
Both.
Right. We put this in place when we had the failed power plant and stopped producing our own power. We had to have a way in order to still continue to serve those customers. So we buy power on the open market, both long-term, short-term, and next-day power. And we do that in a balanced way. And then we buy that power wholesale prices and then sell it to our customers at our retail rate. That is the reason why, on an annual basis at least, the electric utility is actually what you would call profitable if it were a private business. In cities, we don't have profit. We have revenues over expenditures. It's not as catchy as profit, but same basic concept.
How have we done on our purchases? I mean, we've bought low and sold it higher.
We've done well, yes. It is a balance. This year, if I recall correctly, we're budgeted to have just under $1 million worth of revenue over expenditures in this program.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 17 is request for direction regarding letters written by a single council member that express an opinion or official position of the city council. This was at the request of Councilmember Vias.
Yes. There's been letters that have been sent out by the mayor regarding VITA or official position of the city. It never came to the council. I was never informed of it. I've asked other cities how their mayor deals with that. And if a letter is written or needs to be written, it's sent out to all the council members for a consensus or any opposition. And if there is any opposition, then it's notated in the letter. If it's a majority, then the letter goes out and it's just notated who doesn't agree with it. Because there's been some positions that you've taken, Ryan, that I don't agree with and don't have that same opinion. So I'd just like to know, how are we going to handle this? I mean, I hate to send a chaser letter to make it look like it's undermining you, and I think it would look better if you just notated in the letter that this is not my opinion of it. Or how does the council want to handle that?
Well, clearly, if you listen to the tape at the VITA Commission Board Meeting, Hesperia is on the attack. They are attacking us. I don't know that anything I said in my letter to the VITA Commissioners that copied other councils was to reflect an opinion of the city council. It was to reflect my opinion of Hesperia's representative attacking Victorville. And it was clearly that. As the mayor, I get numerous letters requesting that I do numerous things, from speak, to present proclamations, to attend ribbon cuttings, to attend open houses, to attend groundbreakings. Currently, I'm in an effort to save our DC-10 tanker and that contract that we have out at SCLA. I can't imagine that anybody on this council would be against my doing that. But it would be kind of ridiculous for me to have to ask every single time I need to go to Sacramento or talk to somebody in Sacramento whether or not I can do it or not. I just don't know how any other city and mayors operate in that way. That's just my opinion. But what I would really like to know from this council is, do you have confidence in the job I'm doing? If you don't, then you can remove me. If you do, then keep me in my place and let me do what I need to do.
Well, what I would like to say is that, as a former mayor, there are situations that come up, things that need to be done immediately, letters that need to be sent out. And I think that the mayor has that discretionary authority to do that. We, as a council, single council member, don't have that. I'm comfortable with the mayor acting on behalf of the city when he needs to do so in an expeditious manner, to send letters out. There are many things that come up, requests for the letters of support and so on, that we need to be there on behalf of the city of Victorville. So I don't have a problem with the way you're conducting yourself or the manner in which you're responding with the letters.
Now, let me add on to that a little bit. The mayor gets twice as much stuff as the rest of us. Gets the same pay, and he gets twice as busy. So it has its advantages and its drawbacks. But one thing the mayor always does, he reflects the better general policy of the committee, the council. And then he uses his discretion in terms of how he structures his letters and his approaches. There's another aspect to this as well, and that is each one of us sit on multiple committees that are unique and individual to it. I sit on the Waste Management Committee off to the side, and nobody else in the council does that. When I come back, I share whatever needs to be decided at the council level. Nothing, under my own discretion, I go out and enforce the policies of the council for that general area there. The mayor sits on sandbag board and does those unique things. Each one of us doesn't come back every single time and report, especially if something has to be communicated. We just kick it out the door, so long as it's within the policy of the framework of the council, which is pretty clear. Mayor McEckern has not broken any of those policy regulations whatsoever. He has supported each and every one of them that this council has. His discretion on how he couches his letter is his business in that regard. And in addition to that, he has the stronger strength in that he actually was sitting in those committee meetings where the rest of us weren't. So he has that extra policy balance in there, that he is actually operating out of an area that he is uniquely suited for, where the rest of us haven't been to. So that's the advantage and the weakness of being the mayor, because he does have to write letters that most, everybody else supports. If he doesn't like that, then he's got a problem. The rest of us out here, Angela's, her letter is appropriate. I have taken issue with this council when I was in the minority in terms of the Msquali project or the sphere of influence one. I went out there and I put my name to letters as a council member. But I always said, the council voted, the council's policy is this. I am a minority. I clearly noted those in my letters. But there's no reason for any council member, that any one of us can go out and take issue with the majority policy on this board. But the mayor has to have that latitude, and he hasn't broken any of those discretions that I've seen. And Rudy and I have both been set in the mayor's seat ourselves, so I think I speak from experience when I say that the council's operating fine. Angela's letter is perfectly legitimate. She takes issue with those things, that's fine as well. But as long as we're identifying it as we're a minority, we're not representing the policy of the council, each one of us can go out and take a stand on issues that the rest of us may not agree with. So, Ryan, as far as I'm concerned, you don't have to come back and ask us for any of those permissions. We're operating perfectly within that general scope.
Yeah, I will just say, I have not read a letter that you've written yet that I disagreed with, so I don't have any problem with the letters. I think it's perfectly appropriate for Councilmember Vias to do what she did and write a letter that says, "I object, I disagree." I think that's fine.
All right. So is there any motion on Agenda Item Number 17? Turning now, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 18. This is request to award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company for the reconstruction improvement project of Valley Center Drive from Lorraine Drive to La Paz Drive in the amount of $556,750 plus contingency and construction engineering.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
It should be noted that this is a local contractor. Is that correct? Out of Batmore Valley.
Carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 19 is request to approve the annual purchase order for the San Bernardino Sheriff's Contract in the amount of $17,732,379.
By Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 20 is discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I'll start with Councilmember Vias.
I, nothing.
Mike?
We've been having discussions from the time I started my campaign to get elected to this council about the redevelopment agency. There is just gross misinformation flowing in this community about the redevelopment agency. This constant mantra of failures and so on. I believe we need some kind of a presentation, whether it's a workshop or whatever it is, to educate this council entirely and the public, if they want to attend, on exactly how redevelopment agency works. I think I understand, and I think it's been a pretty stunning success, even given the tremendous decline in property values that have put us in a bind on that debt. But I really believe the facts have got to be out there so that we don't just sit here and spout opinions. The facts are pretty clear. I just think we need to hear them. So I'd like to ask that, in some fashion, we agendize that topic, a workshop or a council presentation.
Fine with that. And then, from my perspective, in light of some of the information that's recently come out of the colony settlement down at the county of San Bernardino, I am going to request that this council consider, at its next agenda, that we ban cell phones in closed session. It's apparent that that could be a problem, and I think that we should not have them in closed session any longer. Is everyone okay with having that discussion? All right. Reports from council members. Councilmember Rothschild?
Yeah, just to again remind you that we're approaching the new year, which will have an incredible project, the Desert Express. Just got a big document today from the environmental clearances and the railroad, Federal Railroad Authority authorizing the rail. This is the only high-speed rail system in the whole country, coming from Las Vegas to Victorville. They'll hire 7,000 full-time workers, and they'll focus on the high-desert region for a lot of their hiring, not all of it, but a lot of it, and give us an opportunity to get first in line on this. 7,000 jobs for three years. We hit Victorville, and if California can get their rear in gear and allow for the development of the rail to go over to the 14 and the Palmdale-Lancaster area, that's another two years. We've got five years of 7,000 employees under construction. The station and the maintenance yard is about 700-plus employees, permanent employees after that, in Victorville here. So that's an exciting project. It's probably the single most important job-creating project in all of Southern California, if not, in fact, the whole state, for all I know. But it's a huge project. They'll begin construction next year. So you'll be hearing more and more. I just got my big thick pile of paperwork to go through just today on the financials and everything else. So it's all teed up, ready to go. It's supported by both Feinstein and Harry Reid from Nevada, two probably most important senators involved in this thing, Federal Rail Authority, and everybody's on board. It is a huge, huge project. You've been hearing in the news, day after day, these big companies shutting down and laying off thousands of employees. Here, we're going to be hiring an additional 7,000 for three to five years, depending on how big the project is. But they are coming to Victorville. So it's exciting. Don't let anybody downplay it, because they've been working at it for seven years. It's an exciting, you know, the station is not 100% sure, but I think the station probably, excuse me, is going to be at Dale Evans, and then they'll continue on up to the Fauchoon area in front of the base and over to the Palmdale-Lancaster. That would be the additional extension area. That's my guess. The station could be at Fauchoon, but there's reasons why it might not be put there. So anyway, all that's in the process as we sit here today. So as we get closer to this thing, you'll hear more and more of that on the Desert Express, the high-speed rail train from Las Vegas to Victorville, the only interstate one in the whole United States.
We have to update, Mr. Rothschild, an even more exciting issue that I want to report. As chair of the Audit Committee, our 2011 audit is getting underway.
That was really exciting.
Just so you know, they're beginning the planning phase. They're going to start work in October. I expect to have the report issued in December. Okay, it's not as exciting.
It is. No, it is. The audit's always better.
You know, I do have something to add to the agenda. The comment that was made that we don't know what's going on in the committee meetings, why don't we all give a report of what happened in the meeting so that we're all aware of what you're going through, Ryan? And, you know, I'm not on a very exciting committee. I'm on transit authority. But I could give you an update of what's going on there with the new building and that sort of thing? Maybe a section?
I would be, yeah, that's completely fine with me. I don't have a problem reporting back on what happens at VITA or Sandbag. If I can do it in a written format, it can be a part of consent, but if you want to discuss it...
Well, I think it would be good, not only for us to hear it, but as well as the audience, to know what's happening in their community. Because we don't just sit up here. We attend other meetings in the city, and a lot of people don't know that. All those green buses out there, I help govern that, and Ryan helps with all the transportation issues. We all have other jobs, and I think that the people would be interested in hearing what we're doing.
I'm fine if we put that on the agenda. Everyone okay? All right. Just a report. Sean, I have to applaud you and the Public Works Department. I had the opportunity of driving Bear Valley Road today at Hesperia and what they're doing there to put in the concrete in the second churning lane, churning left onto Hesperia Road. That's been long overdue and much needed, but those guys were doing a great job. They were very professional, dealing with the traffic that is probably one of the busiest intersections in the city. But it's just good to see them out there working and doing that type of stuff to repair our roads. I'm so excited to see La Paz and that, Lorraine Drive and Valley Center Drive, that whole project moving forward. That's been long overdue. But kudos to you and your staff for moving these things forward. And just let them know, I got the opportunity to drive by them several times today, and they were doing a great job. All right. With that, we adjourn.